Thank you. Let's call the briefing session for October 3 to order. Excuse me. I'm filling in for Council President, who is up there in virtual land. Hi, Council President. And first off, Mr. Perkins. Oh, sorry, Terry.
Call the roll.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Terry, do you want to call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Council President Protem Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Zepone is absent.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President Protem Kinnear. Council President Beggs on line, members of the City Council. This is the advanced briefing for Monday, October 10. Starting with our consent agenda, we have five items dealing with waste energy facility. Item one is a contract with Hellrich Brothers for the purchase of boiler tubes to use at the waste energy facility. Item two is a contract renewal with Bay Valve Service for onsite valve repair services at the waste energy facility. Item three, air emissions compliance testing for the waste energy facility, contract with DECO Incorporated, contract with Knight Construction and Supply for mechanical repairs at the waste energy facility. And finally, item five is a contract with Knight Construction and Supply for emergency repair of the tipping floor at the waste energy facility. And our briefer on all five is Mr. David Payne.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. Mr. City Administrator, the first value blanket is a renewal number two of four for Hellrich Brothers Boiler Works in Lawrence, Mass. for the purchase of boiler tube used in the maintenance of the boilers at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from November 1, 2022, through October 31, 2023, and has an expected value of $1,900,000, including taxes. The second is a contract renewal three of four with Bay Valve LLC of Longview, Washington, for onsite repair services for valves at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023, not to exceed $325,000, including taxes. The next is a contract with DECO Inc. of Raleigh, North Carolina, for air emissions compliance testing at the waste energy facility. We do this annually. This contract runs from January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023, with a cost not to exceed $135,278, excluding taxes. The next is renewal one of four with Knight Construction and Supply for mechanical repairs at the waste energy facility. This contract runs from November 1, 2022, through October 31, 2023, with a not-to-exceed amount of $2,200,000, including taxes. The final is a contract with Knight Construction of Deer Park, Washington, for emergency repairs to the tipping floor at the waste energy facility, with a not-to-exceed budget of Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
Consent item number six is amendment to consultant agreement with Parametrics Incorporated for On-Call Civil Engineering Services. Our briefer is Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item six, proposed budget increase for the agreement with Parametrics for On-Call Civil Engineering in the amount of $600,000. This is one of a number of on-call contracts we have for outside engineering assistance that we'll be updating over the next couple of months. Funds expended under this contract are reimbursed by various city public works projects.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item seven on the consent agenda for Monday, October 10, extension three of three in amendment one of the amended water supply agreement with the City of Airway Heights. Our presenter is our Director of Public Works, Marlene Feist.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. As we discussed last week, this is the amendment to our water supply agreement with Airway Heights. It allows us to continue to provide the water that we have been serving them since they discovered that PFOS/POA contamination in 2017. It also allows for them to participate in our water system planning so that we can help plan for their needs as well as ours, support for a grant application through the Department of Health for an additional booster station on the West Plains, and also ensures that we'll have close collaboration and communication with Airway Heights in the coming years. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Items eight and nine are agreements for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. Item eight is a three-year personal services agreement with ALS Group USA to provide specialized testing of wastewater and stormwater. Item nine is a public works agreement with Corrosion Companies for hypochloride tank repairs and modifications. Our briefer is Rayland Janette.
Hello, Councilmembers. Good afternoon. The first one, yes, is with ALS. They're going to provide this specialized testing. We're going to, this contract's for three years, and it's not to exceed $221,000, and annually is $73,840. This testing includes things for like PCB, fire retardant, dioxins, and they are compliance issues with ecology, so. Any questions on that one? And the second one is actually two projects that we've combined into one because it's the same company that would be doing it. One is for the hypochlorite tanks used for disinfectant. They're about 20 years old. Got to go in and fix them. We've already had one link in one tank, and so this is just fixing the other one, or one of the other ones. And the other one is in the batch tanks at the new NLT facility. We got to reduce some of the nozzles in that one. And that one is for a total not to exceed $100,000 there. Wrong one, sorry. $72,000. Any questions? That's right, line. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayland. Item 10 on the consent agenda is an agreement with outside council, a civic law group to provide additional legal services and advice. Briefer presenter is our interim city attorney, Mr. Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon. Thank you, City Administrator. Thank you, City Council. This is for an amendment to our contract. It is for outside legal services. This is a lawsuit that was filed against the city for employment discrimination, employment wrongful termination. This case is in two different courts currently. Actually, that's not true. This case was just denied by the United States Supreme Court to hear it, so that case has now come to a conclusion. But we do have one case left in state court, and I don't remember if it's at the Court of Appeals or if it is being petitioned to our state Supreme Court. But we're asking to add some money to that contract. There will be a little bit more briefing on that case, and we're asking that this be brought up so that we can pay for that briefing.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Item 11, a report of the mayor pending 11A, claims of payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. Item 11B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. That information will be completed and filled out for council's consideration on Monday, October 10. And item 12 will be city council meeting minutes. Again, that will be completed for council's consideration on Monday, October 10. That completes the consent agenda. Moving on to the special budget ordinances, council staff would ask that the first ordinance under general fund for clerk two and business analyst two be moved to consideration for the FY '23 budget and will not be heard during this briefing today. Our next four ordinances are all special budget ordinances dealing with the solid waste fund. And our presenter is Mr. Chris Avery.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers.
Excuse me, we need action to withdraw this C36277. Or defer indefinitely.
I was going to move to table 36277.
Second.
Yeah, I talked to Major Olson, and he said that October 17 might work out well for them as well. Is that when we were deferring it to?
No. So this one.
This is an indefinite.
This is indefinitely. It has to be included in the 2023 budget. So that's what we're asking.
Oh.
That's what staff's asking. Go ahead.
Yeah, so happy to defer until after the date set for the administration to respond on SBOs and budget requests, but I'm definitely not supportive of indefinitely deferring.
Go ahead.
Well, would it truly be indefinite deferral if we're asking to put it in the budget, which we will have to approve by the middle of December for 2023? So at this point, we're actually asking for a deferral of October, November, eight weeks?
Could we just say that, then?
Council President, do you want to amend that to?
Well, the reason we're tabling it is because we're not going to do it as a special budget ordinance. We're going to do it as the budget ordinance. So that's why it's tabled indefinitely, so that we can take it up in the regular budget.
I don't.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my confusion is, I think a portion of this anyway is for, because they want the position in '22, and I'm, again, happy to debate that, the good, the bad, and happy to do it after we know what all the expenses are for '22. I just don't want to indefinitely defer this, take it up for '23, and then find out maybe it was important that we had this person in place before then.
No, I'm just trying to figure it out.
And, go ahead, Council President.
Yeah, I think the thinking was that they probably wouldn't be able to hire it before the budget, so that's why.
I guess if we put it off, it would extend even further down the road that they could hire that position, right? If they couldn't hire it before budget, then if that position is approved, they can't be looking for somebody to fill that position until after they have that approval, and so it might even push it further down the road.
The hiring.
The hiring, yeah.
They could still look.
You can still post something if you.
Without an approved position? You can do that?
Go ahead.
I think we're trying to get them to really let us know how important it is to them that is in the 2023 budget. I think that's the impetus I'm trying to get to. It's a civil service position. They may even have somebody in mind already. So once it's in the budget, if that's the case, then they can act immediately on that. So I guess we're trying to get from these kind of knockoff, these one-offs, as we budget through the end of the year. That's the position. Again, the position can and will be funded if it's their priority as well when they put budget before us.
Yeah, and that all makes sense. But if this motion fails, I'll make a new motion to defer to November 7, just to put that out there.
Yes. I guess my concern is that we've had all these conversations on having somebody in the downtown precinct, and I just don't know if that's going to hold this off longer. I mean, it's been, I feel like we're sending mixed messages a little bit, that we want that downtown precinct open, we want somebody in there, we want people to be able to go in and do what they need to do, but they can't do it unless they have somebody at that front desk. So this holds it off until, what, November, December?
Go ahead, Council.
So Councilmember Stratton, I actually hear you that this seems like a delay, but I'm a little frustrated they've taken so long to get this before us, to get that position actually occupied, because we've been talking about this since the downtown precinct actually opened, and various reiterations of a COPS volunteers or somebody else, and so now it's at the end of the, it's in the fourth quarter, it comes before us, so I don't know if this will expedite it or not expedite it, to tell you the truth, going forward.
Go ahead, Council President.
Yeah, what I was hoping is they would simply transfer clerk two to the precinct like they transferred everybody else to the precinct. They could still do their clerk two work from there, but available to answer the door if somebody rims it.
Any other comments? Okay, so the motion is to defer, what did you say, Council President, defer indefinitely?
Table.
Table it? Table it. And seconded by Councilmember Wilkerson, all those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and nays?
Nay.
All right, three to three. It fails.
So I will make a new motion to defer to, November 7, I believe is a Monday? Is that correct? Yeah, to November 7.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I still think that I'm not in favor of deferring it that long. Like I said, I don't think we need that much time to discuss and go through this particular one, so I probably, I'm going to vote against it still, but.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
That's when it will show up in their budget.
Right.
That's when the budget will be presented to us. So at this point, that is three weeks about. So I'll be in support of the motion.
Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One nay. Okay, passes. Thank you.
Moving on along.
Thank you, Council President Protem. Mr. Avery.
All right, thank you. The four SBOs being briefed today are funded through solid waste reserves due to solid waste receipts exceeding budgeted projections. There's additional funds in the reserve account to facilitate these four needs. The first SBO is for $172,300 for the purchase of an air dryer. This project is identified in the 2023 capital plan, but due to the long lead time, an order needs to be placed in 2022 to ensure arrival for completion of the project next year. The second SBO is in the amount of $827,310 for the unexpected repairs to the tipping floor at the waste energy facility that was previously briefed by Mr. Payne. Structural damage to the wall of the pit in an area of the floor was noted that requires immediate repair. The third SBO is for $1,100,000 for the purchase of routine maintenance items such as boiler tubes and great components. Due to the long lead times, these items in order need to be placed in 2022 for arrival for the spring 2023 outage. These items are included in the proposed 2023 O&amp;M budget. And the final SBO is for an additional $500,000 for ash and bypassed waste disposal. Due to the solid waste receipts exceeding projections, additional funds are needed to accommodate disposal. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Before you go.
Yes.
So some of you don't know this, but Mr. Avery, you stepped up this weekend and helped out a refugee family, and I just want to personally thank you and Marlene Feist, family who, from Afghanistan, did not speak, read, or write English, did not know the protocol for getting garbage collected, and Mr. Avery helped them out, and I'm so grateful, and it shows how we can come together and how our government can actually work for everybody.
Yeah, and I think the credit's due to the staff, too, because they responded immediately to go pick it up, and so big kudos to them to be able to assist, so.
So just for your, everybody, they were hanging their bags on the picket fence in front of their house, hoping that the solid waste collectors would just, I guess, snatch it from the pickets and move on. Indeed, that's not the way we collect garbage, and so that's been all straightened out, but you were a huge force in helping get that resolved.
Yeah, glad to help, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Kinnear, it also shows how important it is that we have language access in our materials available for the people that we serve, where English is their second language or no language at all.
All right. Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
2222 East North, Alamo is my trash.
All right, our final item for the Monday, October 10 advanced agenda is a resolution adopting the 2022 Parks and Natural Lands Master Plan. Our presenter is Nick Hamid.
You got that right. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Happy to be here, everyone. My name is Nick Hamid with Spokane Parks. The 2022 Master Plan Resolution you're being asked to endorse was briefed at the Urban Experience Committee. This is a request for council to adopt by resolution, that document, which is our strategic citywide planning document conducted every six to 10 years within the park system. The last time this was performed was back in 2010, and we have been looking at our neighborhood parks and adopted this foundational document as a park board in June of 2022. This does provide a framework for us to prioritize our city park investment over the next 10-plus years, and we ask for your endorsement. Any questions?
Just, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for the time you've spent with the neighborhood councils and doing your presentations, making sure they understand what the plan is and just how professional and good you are in those neighborhood council meetings. They really feel listened to, and it's valuable, so thank you.
Thank you. And just a little note for you, we just won a Washington State APA Award for Community Engagement on this plan. We just heard out last week, so we're pretty proud of that.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Council President Protem Kinnear, that concludes the advanced briefing agenda for October 10.
We approve it, right? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I just think it's so great, you know, when Councilwoman Kinnear's in charge, it feels like we really get through the.
Boom, boom, boom. And that is no bad reflection on you, Council President.
I'm all about the process.
Exactly, okay. No discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, passed. And so moving on to tonight's agenda, we have ordinance C36282. We'd like to defer that to October 17 for more clarification. In fact, put it on finance for October 17. So I would need a motion.
That's 36282?
The lightning.
36282, the very first.
So moved.
I move that we defer to the October 17 meeting and refer to the Finance Committee that day as well.
Correct, that's what I said. Yes, so I have a, who?
Moved.
Moved, who seconded? Okay, great. Any discussion? Yes.
Why would we not also do this one to November 7, then?
Because, well, we could, but it's on, we want to put it on the 17th for finance, and we could then just up or down it during the meeting on the 17th.
Okay. This isn't something we wanted to ask them to put into their budget as well, and?
We might, we might. But let's see what they have to say on the 17th at finance. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one nay. And then on C36284, wanted to defer that until October 17. Council President, do you want to talk about that a little bit? You have some concerns.
Yeah, I move that we defer that to the 17th and also discuss that finance, continue our discussion about whether we should be doing this in-house or using contract employees, and if we are going to use contract employees, whether this is the right price.
Okay. Before we do that, can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask if, I don't know if Johnny has, I know he's been kind of around some of these discussions, and so I just didn't know if he had any input in terms of timing or anything. I just wanted to see if there was anything there.
Nothing to add at this time, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes. And then finally, C36288, this needs to come off the agenda. It's already been included in budget. So I need a motion to table this indefinitely. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So they've already gotten their check, and they found funding via a different route, right? Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that's off. And then I've talked to some of you about October 31 is a Monday. Three of you have small children, one of you has grandchildren, some of you, especially our staff, this is their favorite, well, one of their favorite holidays, so want to know what your temperature is for canceling our October 31 meeting.
Yeah, I would support that. I know it's a big day for families and, you know, for them to not have to worry about, you know, being here, and they can spend that time with their family. I think that's a, I think that's a good idea.
Selfishly, I'll agree.
All right, do we need to take action, Council President? All right.
No.
It might be helpful for the city clerk.
You want to take action? All right, she wants to take action.
So moved.
Great, and a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just want everybody to know that I'm going to, I was going to wear a Halloween costume that night, so you're going to miss out.
Listen, so as I was talking to Councilwoman Kinnear today, I said, okay, if we don't cancel it, I'm dressing up, so I would have been right there with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe next year.
We can dress up the Monday before.
Yeah.
Or that Thursday, which is a very good reason to cancel the meeting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. Terry, thank you for keeping us on track. And then one other thing, Hannah Lee, what was the?
Council President wanted to talk about the December 19 meeting.
Great, go ahead.
Yep, I had two things before we went to executive session. One was, this is just more of a, for your information, we're scheduled for a December 19 meeting. We don't usually meet that close to Christmas, especially if we just passed the budget, but my inclination is not to cancel that meeting yet. We are going to cancel the 26th and the first meeting in January because of holidays, but I just, I've told Ms. Allers to let people know and administration that they really need to get their, any SBO budgets or contracts on the agenda for the 12th is the last time we're accepting those. So that's one thing. And then the second thing is it's almost time to revisit our council rules, and Ms. Allers is working, she's inventorying all the suggestions she's gotten over this year, and she's going to put those together and track change, and we're going to discuss at a council retreat sometime in November. But if you have any proposals for rule changes, if you can get those to her by the 17th, so she can consider those, and then we'll have a full discussion at a council retreat, which will be a Friday in November, so if you have conflicts with Fridays in November, other than the Friday. Friday to November, other than the Friday after Thanksgiving, also let Ms. Allers know about that.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else, Council President? Are we, we're good to go?
Can, can I just clarify, Terry, did that work for the 19th? Is that all you needed? Yes. Okay.
We just need to adjourn to executive session to discuss labor matters and potential litigation.
Okay, and Mr. Perkins, how long?
30 minutes.
Okay, we will be in executive session for 30 minutes.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
That's why we want to run more time in the week.
I see, I see.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m. No action is expected when they return.
City Council is extending executive session for 10 minutes until 4:40 p.m.